Okay, so hello everyone, hello Facebook family. So this is yet another episode of faculty meetings, the community faculty meetings that we have here in the community inside of our wonderful city of Newark. So this evening you're in for a treat as usual. We're gonna be having a few people join us soon. And one person is coming on right now. And he's gonna be talking to us pretty soon. Hello Cory, how are you?
Hey, how's it going?
Denise Cole, who's gonna also be joining us really soon also, as a matter of fact, I think that is her now.
Okay.
So we're gonna bring her in. Someone made a friendly suggestion, right? Which I think is absolutely great as a suggestion. They wanted me to talk about the ballot. Everyone should have gotten a ballot that looks like this in the mail, right? They, it came with not one but two envelopes because the election is being done by a melon ballot only. So there's a question here, I'm just gonna start off talking about this question. It basically says resolve that there should be raised for general funds, one hundred thirty-eight million, three hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars in two thousand and twenty twenty-one for the ensuing school year of two thousand and twenty-one. Now, basically, the question sounds pretty clear to me. So, I mean, they want to raise money, so they wanna know if you wanna raise money. The reason why they ask you the question is because it's gonna come from taxes, right? But the thing is, and you guys could add in when I'm done, I'm just sharing the content knowledge that I have pertaining to the question. The taxes come from the homeowners, the taxes come from property. So because Newark is declining in terms of property and taxes in that way that we have a lot of renters, it puts more pressure on the homeowners that actually live here, which again, there's a huge imbalance between homeowners and renters. And as taxes continue to go up, people tend to wanna migrate and move away. So we don't really want people to move away, we don't really want the taxes to go up. And what I would question, and I'm gonna get some commentary from our guests shortly. So a couple of situations here, a couple of things here with this question. So number one, we don't know whether or not this is some type of slush fund for politics, right? We don't know if, if, if they need that much money, right? How do we just give money to millionaires over a million dollars, right? For, you know, just because, so if we need a type of money in education? And is this money to recoup the money that was given out? So we don't know, but it seems like really, really excessive. And with that being said, my answer would be no. I'm definitely, as a homeowner, not voting to raise any more taxes, especially as long as they are banning parents' participation, limiting parent talk time in terms of policy. So as long as that's going on and I can't come and talk, or I might be banned if I'm not yaying and not into everything that's happening, and I don't have a democratic voice in the decision making, then my taxes need to be banned from going up. So I would definitely vote no, but I will tell you, you guys how to vote. So with that being said, I wanna introduce Denise Cole. Denise is gonna tell us a little bit about herself, and then she's gonna give us a response to that question. And Cory T., thank you so much for being with us this evening, is a board member in the city of Patterson. He's gonna tell us a little about himself and also give us some, a response to that question. So Denise?
So my name is Denise Cole. I've been an education advocate in the state of New Jersey for over thirty years. I go local and national. And I testify before the Senate and the Assembly on issues regarding education. I'm very active in Newark. I attend the majority of the board and business meetings. Actually, one of the board members said my attendance is better than some of the actual board members. But I love advocacy in education, I love the city of Newark, I love the individuals in all five wards. Thank you.
Thank you Denise Cole, thank you so much for taking out your time to speak and to spend with us, to help advocate and teach our community everything they need to know about what's going on with the board.
So yeah, I'm Cory T., I'm a board member from the city of Patterson, New Jersey. Been on the battlefield in terms of education advocacy since the late nineties. I've also been, as Denise has been, to the State House. As a matter of fact, we met actually in Trenton, that's how we actually became acquainted with each other on the battlefield. And just like she said, her, I, Sheila, several of us are in Trenton more than the actual elected officials that are in office in our cities. But I'm glad to be on tonight with some dynamic, dynamic individuals. And I'm ready to have this conversation, this dialogue.
Fantastic, fantastic. So, the title of this evening's show is, let me get this right, Inside Information at the Board of Education. Oftentimes, people are without all the details and information that's needed to make a totally informed decision on how they should vote, what they should be voting on, what their reps have been doing. And sometimes we are just too busy to keep eye on everything. But the first thing I wanna talk about are the most recent articles that have come up. One article that was really concerning, as it pertains to the Newark Board of Education surrendering unanimously their rights over to Superintendent Roger Leon. So we're gonna start with Denise. Denise, you know, what, what do you think about that decision? Are you in agreement with it? Like what is your take on that?
Well, actually, I was at the board, I attended the board virtual meeting when that took place. And because it was a virtual meeting, we could not speak up. But I would, if I, if it was a regular board meeting and I was in attendance, I would've told them and supported Reginald Bledsoe and the fact that they should not, they should not suspend the board bylaws. What they could do was suspend some of the requirements where he had to come for a vote, but not suspended governing responsibility in holding virtual board meetings for the public to stay, stay knowledgeable and for them to stay transparent about what is taking place. So they could've did a number of things other than what they did was suspend their right as a governing body. I thought personally, no, I wasn't in agreement with it. I thought they were abandoning their duties that people who voted for them expected them to govern in a time of crisis, not to abandon their duty to turn it over to a contracted employee. Even though I support Roger wholly, but he's still contracted to run the district. They were elected to government district and they should've been there for him and the support of him and the district. And also in, also interpreting policy, helping him guide with policy, helping him secure information and answers. But I felt like they abandoned us and I felt like they violated public trust when they did that, especially when they didn't listen to their board member who was telling them, you don't have to do that. The bylaws actually state what you do in the crisis.
Cory, has anything like this ever happened in the city of Patterson? Patterson is our sister city to Newark, as we all know. And what do you think about this decision being made?
Oh no, that's not happening here, it's not gonna happen here. We have our, our visual meetings, but the superintendent knows her place and we'll never, we'll never, look, when we took the oath of office, we, we actually went down the line with the code of ethics. And we said, we're not gonna surrender our vote or authority to anybody, any special group.
Wait, 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 so this question was posed to you guys also?
No, it wasn't posed to us, but I'm just hearing about it now.
Oh, okay, okay.
They haven't even attempted, they wouldn't even attempt that with us, because we wouldn't, there's no way we would hear that. We, we will conduct our meetings online, we do it, you know, via Zoom, you know, every other week, but in terms of turning over anything to her, we're, we have one employee and that's Ms. Schaefer. And she's gonna, you know, we, we won't, we don't micromanage the district, but we're not gonna give our, our authority over to the person we hired.
Okay, so Ms. Schaefer is the?
Superintendent.
Superintendent. And her role in Patterson is, it relates to Patterson Public Schools, is he is an employee.
Right, to us.
And I think that that's where the mix-up is, because a lot of people in Newark, I, I'm not sure that we know collectively enough to understand that. Like we think that sometimes our, our, the people in position are governing over us instead of the other way around. And that's why I wanted you to join us for this conversation, so that it could be totally unbiased. Because as you know, I'm running for school board, but I think it's just better to get the information from a student school board member in a sister school in Newark, as well as talking to a parent who has been, you know, in this struggle for years. So with that being said, like I'm really shocked to hear that. Denise? Okay, I'm gonna wait till Denise comes back. I see a couple, I see a question, I'm gonna go to a question. Brenda says, as a parent, okay, of eighth, of an eighth grader, I thought that the virtual parent engagement tour was very productive. The parents had an opportunity to ask questions and represent our kid's school. That's the question, Denise, I'm gonna let you comment first and maybe then I'll comment.
Well, I was on that virtual tour meeting too, but I want the parent to understand the meeting, whether the, the meeting was productive and you were able to ask questions, that's not the duty of the board. The superintendent should've been present at that virtual meeting and some of the superintendent staff who get paid to answer your questions for you. The board's duty is to govern the district, not to do a parent engagement tour. The, the actual school board governs the entire district. So if they were gonna do an engagement tour, it should've been an engagement tour for the entire community, the entire teaching staff, the entire student staff, the entire parents and everyone. People have to understand, they're, and, and Cory can speak to this. You know, they were elected to run the district. The superintendent is elected to do engagement tours to answer your questions in reference to your problems with the students, what do you need, where do you go? He's the one that's identified to answer those questions. The board is identifying, you come before the board only when you've been through the chain of command in the school district and you've gotten those out. Even when you come to the school board the first time with those concerns and stuff, they weren't the ones that's supposed to answer the question. It clearly says in the policy that when you come before the school board and you ask them a question, they're to take that question and pass it off to the superintendent for answer, because he's the one they hire to run the district. And he has staff that is highly paid to answer a parent's question. They are not elected secretaries for the superintendent.
Say that part again Denise, say that part slow one more time.
Okay, real loud.
They are elected to govern the district. They are not elected to be secretaries for the superintendent to engage in questions and, and answer questions for the superintendent. They are to engage and hear the community's concern and what the community feel how things are going, what is necessary. When a parent come before the board, they're supposed to be respectful, take the parent's concern, pass it to the superintendent. Now, if that concern, what the law says, if that concern that they came before the board with is not addressed when they pass it off to the superintendent and they follow the chain, that the next time they come before the board, the board has the power to ask for an investigation of the issue and a report rendered to them, what they're going to do to resolve this parent's issue, because this is her second time before the board. But the parent also has a responsibility to document and to follow the chain within, in their school of communication. And also know that there are community members that can help you with those things. Although they deter you from speaking to community members, you have to remember, community leaders are there for you. And community leader's job is to keep the board held accountable for the policies, procedure and governance of the district, to hold the superintendent to the duties of the district. And the superintendent is supposed to be following the board's goals, not the board following the superintendent's goals. They are paid to govern the district and create policies that help run our district appropriately and so that we can achieve academic success for every student that attends traditional public school.
Okay, thank you Denise.
Yeah, and you know, and there's another aspect too. A lot of times as board members, you know, many of us are also community, community leaders, or we were previously before we got elected. A lot of times you may see somebody in the supermarket, they'll say, hey, my daughter's teacher has said this and that. Can you come there and check them? Said, no, I have to give it to the superintendent, superintendent will take care of it. Just give me the school, your child's name, the teacher. They want you to go in the classroom. I said, no, that's not my job as a board of education member. I hired, we hired the professionals to take care of the business. If they can't do it, then we have to go into executive session and discuss personnel changes. Because it don't make sense to keep hiring these people and paying them if they're not gonna do the job and they're, and, and parents are waiting for us to do it. That means we're hiring the wrong people. So we have to go back to the drawing board and start getting rid of folks. Or either giving them warning, giving the rice notices, bringing them in, saying, hey, we, we, this is what needs to be done in the school. You're the principal, if it's not being done, superintendent obviously isn't getting it done. So we gotta step in now and we gotta have, we gotta have a talk about personnel. But, but in terms of physically going into a classroom and talking to a teacher, that's not our role as board members. You know, it's not our role to do that. It's our role as a governing body to govern. That's what we do, we govern the laws, we run, what we govern and we, we drive policies and the procedures of the district. But we employ the superintendent to govern the administration. Her job is to run, run the district. And the one employee that she, the one employer that she has is us. So we, we bring our demands to her, she lets us know what she's able to do or what she's not able to do right away and she's gonna work on. And she relays that message to her staff. And that, and when you, when you keep it like that, was my first term on the board, I was trying to do everything. And then I realized I'm burning myself out, because we're voting on salaries for people who are hired to do this. And you're out there doing it, you're, you're doing it as a volunteer. And you hire people to do this and they're not doing it. So, you know, it gave me a whole different outlook as to how this whole thing works in terms of chain of command.
And so I, I'm glad you said that, and on that note, just to segue into the next question. That's the, that's the problem. See, for years Newark has been looked at as somewhere like a toilet, right? They can just come here, do what they wanna do and get over. And people come here, every, I mean, I'm talking from the police station, teachers, there are tons of people who come here from different places. Come here, get a salary, go home, they're not invested, and this is what ends up happening. Even sometimes when we get elected officials that start off living here, they end up relocating somewhere else. And when you have that going on, it's a lack of respect that's shown to the community overall. And you see it, you see it in the aesthetics, you see it in the way that, that people go about their business. And what I'm concerned with primarily in this case, and Denise, I wanna get with you back on this again. I am so appalled of the fact that I still, it still doesn't make sense to me how these people gave over, just totally relinquished their rights to anybody. These people were elected into office, two of the people that happen to be running right now to safeguard the voice, to be the representative for the people in the community who voted for them. And they gave it away willingly. Now, I wanna talk a little bit about, I heard there was one, one board member who did pose a question. What happened with that Denise?
Yes, Reginald Bledsoe. On the virtual tour, when, when Josephine Garcia announced she had a resolution to come forth to surrender the, to suspend the board's bylaws and give all access to the superintendent. Reggie had a question, Reggie raised his hand, she did not, Reggie said, I think you wanna table that, because our board bylaws give us what to do in the time of a crisis. We should think about surrendering our bylaws and surrendering our, our duties over to the superintendent. You know, he might not have said it in exactly those words, but he did question it. When he questioned, you could tell everybody had a problem with him questioning the fact.
Who had a problem with Reggie asking that question?
You could tell they did because other board members.
Who, the board?
The board, yeah, other board members. And the reason why I'm saying they had an issue with it is because she said, this is what we're gonna do. Reggie sat, pulled back and then it was other people that chimed in, but they chimed in in support of the resolution to suspend their duties over to the superintendent. If you go back and watch the board meeting, you'll actually see. But the issue that I had coming forward in the February meeting, the reason why it was a problem is because the February meeting, they had a meeting and they want, they, in the sidebar meeting where all the board members, because they're doing these things in silos too. They had an emergency meeting where all board members didn't attend, but they did have a floor. In that meeting, they decided to vote, only thirty people can speak at a board meeting. When they brought it to the table with other board members who weren't present there, they were concerned that you did business at a special meeting that should've been done before a regular board meeting, so that they all had an opportunity to weigh in on it. Because as the chair, you're supposed to get everyone's view. And they wait, they had that conversation at a special meeting instead of a public meeting where the public had a right to weigh in on that decision also. So what this board consistently have done is shut out parent voice. And I'm not understanding how you get elected in a position to represent the public and you turn around and make rules adversarial to the very people that elected you in office. You're not representing the public, you're supposed to make decisions based on the majority in the district, the children, the parents, the students, the teachers, the community. You're supposed to be objective and transparent, the law says, the community.
That's good stuff. Denise, I'm gonna just pause you for a minute, because we got a ton of questions to get to. And I want some input on some other things from you as necessary. Cory, question to you, what Denise was just saying about the parents, you know, it's like a atmosphere of animosity, if you will, between the parents and the actual board. What I wanna ask you is in Patterson, do they have situations where as they try to limit parent participa, participation? Or try to ban parents, does that happen in other cities? I honestly don't know, and I'm just curious if that happens in Patterson.
Uh, no, no, I mean, we've had parents that have come to the mic. We actually established the policy as a board that, you know, to limit any kind of like aggressiveness, we don't address any public while they're speaking. Like we don't, back in the day, used to have board members going back and forth with people who were at the mic. What we do now is we don't say anything while the parents have come to the mic. And there's times they come to the mic, I mean, their arms are swinging and they're screaming and yelling. We sit there, and I know a lot of them wonder, why y'all sit there and don't say anything? I'm like, that's because that's a policy we adopted, that we're not gonna engage in the meetings and we're not gonna go back and forth, because we understand, a lot of times if you're frustrated, you need to get that out, you need that release. We're not here to stop that, we're here to let you say what you need to say. Soon as you're done, we're gonna have somebody there waiting to address your issue and get it straightened out.
Wow, that's fantastic. Now, you see what I've seen here in Newark? A person will come up, they're very passionate about what it is that they're making an inquiry about. But because maybe it's not presented in the best professional way, because by this point, parents are totally frustrated. So, but they're still getting the messaging across, and that's what the board members they elected should do, hit a message over how it's being given. But at any rate, after the person finishes, I think it's so disrespectful when people says, next.
Yeah, we don't do that, exactly.
You know, and, and it's, and, and again, like Denise said, it just makes the whole situation really adversarial. And I wanna get back to Denise on this, so hopefully she's coming back, because I've been through those two policies. The only two policies was the limiting of parents' talk time here and the banning of parents from just talking, period. And if I'm not mistaken, Denise was involved in that. So Denise, just to catch you up with what Cory just said, Cory said that they have a policy there, when the parent is going off, they can't go back and forth, but they make sure that when the parent is done, they have a person to come up to address the parent's concerns. And what I said was, what I've seen happen here was that, you know, they just basically look at the parent and go, next. You know, and with the whole, the whole smirk and everything, because body language speaks too. Let's face it, it doesn't make sense. So Denise, again, as you being involved in this parent issue with the banning or attempting to ban, can you like shed some light on that situation for us?
Yeah, this board has, the board has adopted an issue that they don't address parents. They're not supposed to go back and forth with parents. But depending on the parent comes to the mic, they don't allow the parent to finish the statement like Cory said, they allow the parent to finish, and as soon as the parent finishes, they assess them, body address them. At our board meetings, they don't allow us to finish. Even if we only got three more lines and we say, wait, we just got three, the, the chair or the vice, Garcia or Dawn, whichever one is running the meeting that day, will say, your time is up, your time is up. And they get upset because I finished my statement, because actually the law says that they're supposed to give us an opportunity to complete our statement. Because it doesn't say that they're supposed to put a time limit on it. That because this board and the people who sit on that board or charter, now, one of them who stood on the board who's running now, Floeisha Hill Hall's son was at Kip school, but now goes to public school. But before that, he was in charter and she's still a person in charter, sitting up on the Newark Public School Board.
Denise, we're having some difficulty hearing you.
Is that better?
I think so.
Yes, a little bit.
Okay, I turned it down, I had it turned up.
Okay.
Is that better?
You had a child in charter school and what?
And now, he, he, her children do attend traditional public school, but her, her advocacy still have been and always will be charter. I said, board member Floeisha Johnson Hall, I think it is. I, I used the other one, the one that's running on your slate. And I meant not on your slate, but running for another term on the school board. They, her and Dawn, even in the article, they're the ones who want to silence parent voices and always talking about Cory, parents are being disrespectful. Now, me personally, they tried to ban me only because they said that I go over my time, my three-minute timeframe and that's disrespectful. So I don't know, I don't know how to gauge their disrespect when they don't, they're elected officials. This is a open public meeting, I don't know if they understand the open public meeting laws. I don't know if they even look at the policies of the district, because I read into record last month all of the policies and there's a policy in there that say, we, they should give a parent time to complete their statement. And the issue was that they want to ban from disrespect. The most disrespectful people are the people who sit on the board. Dawn Hanes and Floeisha Hill, they, they, one time I was speaking to the highly skilled professional, talking with her, she asked me a question, we were talking, they were standing on the stage mocking me as board members. The highly skilled professional, Ms. Nouns, had to say to them, Floeisha and Dawn, stop. Dawn immediately stopped, Floeisha kept going. I turned to Ms. Nouns and said, Ms. Nouns, see what I'm talking about? Ms. Nouns said to her, if you don't be quiet now and turn around and walk, I will, you will see consequences. She shut up then and turned around and walked away. But it wasn't even a conversation with them two, it was a conversation with Ms. Nouns. Ms. Nouns can verify. I put in a complaint to Josephine Garcia about how they mock when I'm sitting at the board business meeting, how they make faces, how they mock, how they make comments. And I had a person sitting next to me and said, wow, you guys really don't like each other. I said, ma'am, have you heard me say anything or make a face? She said, no, but they are. I said, yes. I said, yes. I said, but that's how they are. And I felt that the reason why they were doing that, Cory and Shilla, was because they wanted to engage me in a confrontation. Because what the law says, the only way a person from the public can be banned from an open public meeting. And even if they're banned for violence, it has to be a certain amount of time. You cannot ban a person from an open public meeting forever. So I felt like they intentionally were trying to engage me in confrontation where I would be violent towards them or make a threat towards them, then they would have the right to ban me. But I'm professional, I would never do that, I don't do that.
Well, good for you Denise, good for you. Um, Cory, what were you about to say?
I was just saying, I was just saying in general, you know, Dawn is, is an interesting person. I've been following her page and some of the comments she makes. I know she's a Muslim and there's a lot of things that I see that don't resemble Islam, you know? Yeah, I mean, a lot of times we let the politics override our faith or what we believe. And that can't happen. You still gotta be who you are before you got on the board. You know what I'm saying? And don't let your, your cronies or your crew change the perception of your belief. And you know what's right and wrong, do what's right. Don't let, don't let those folks take you into another path that you know is not right. You know what I'm saying? And that, that, that's all I'm saying about that.
And you know what's sad about it is that, well, I just want to say, personally, it's real quick.
Oh, okay.
Let's go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just finish it real quick. Um, and then you could finish.
That's okay.
Um, what's sad about it is that sitting in those positions in the city of Newark, you should, your behavior should be that of a role model, you know? And um, and if these people are not doing that, that's a problem. Because what is the messaging that is sent into our kids who one day, you know, should be filling those seats? And, and that's the chief concern of mine, is that, you know, everybody wants to, you know, be in a certain position. But when we get there, we can't deal with it, you know, we can't deal with the discipline that's involved. We can't deal with the parents sharing out on how they feel about things. So this is like really um, devastating to hear. And then, in, in the fact that Cory, you don't even live in Newark. And so far, all I know, she doesn't even know that you're following her page just as a fellow board member and assistant. So how many other people are following her?
Yeah.
So, you know, and it is problematic. And Denise, Denise, I'm so sorry you went through that. Um, so when you made the complaint to the president of the board, did she take any steps to resolve it?
Well, let me say this. Josephine at the board meeting said, when I took the, wrote, sent the complaint, she even sent, uh, wrote an email to the director who was Nancy about what I was, what I said. And she said she would take notice. At a couple of the board meetings, she started taking notice. She even said, Dawn and Floeisha, stop. What did you do? And she, she corrected them a couple of times um, because of their actions.
Yeah.
And so, my whole thing is, first of all, also, I didn't give my history as a captain and a leader in the military and I'm a veteran captain. I'm trained in leadership. When you, and I've also served on boards. When you sit on boards and you deal with the public, there's nothing that a person comes to that board should say to you that you should take personal. Your parents sometimes are frustrated, went through some devastating stuff at the schools. So when they come to you, they may release frustration. And as a professional, you should never take it personal. I don't ever go to the mic and curse at anybody. I do, I think they get upset because I have been telling them they're not following policy. Um, I supported the superintendent and when the superintendent um, was chosen, I was the only one speaking his name. I support him. I even have had to confront um, Superintendent Leon, Roger, Leon. Um, and, and, and leadership comes from the top. When you can't show the type of decorum to the public you're supposed to, then what behavior do you emulate for the person you hired for the district? For him to lead and for him to build morale and for him to build empathy and, and leadership? You, as a board member, have to always emulate professionalism. You don't ever want to, as an elected member, and Cory could correct me if I'm wrong, you don't ever want, as an elected member or as a leader, to violate public trust.
Right.
I never come to the mic wanting to be um, adversary with anyone sitting on that board. I can tell you right now, I can't tell you a personal thing about them because this is not personal for me. This is strictly professional. Whenever I've come to the board, I told them they violate, they, they are in violation right now of some, the Oprah, uh, the Brown Act and a couple of other, uh, uh, the, the Constitution of New Jersey. They're in violation, the Title eighteen A, Section two four two. They cannot use their position, the superintendent nor the board, and correct me if I'm wrong Cory, they cannot use their benefit to shut the community out of information that the community is entitled to.
That's right.
You cannot ever suspend your rights as a governing body.
Yep.
What, true, Cory, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Is she right?
Yeah, she's absolutely right. It's unethical, you know, somebody can file ethics complaint on account of that. And let me say something else. The reason I kept alluding to the point of saying, we have one employee, you know, that's it. The parents, those are the people that are our bosses. They're the ones that hired us. We don't, they're not our employees. When the parents come to the mic, those are our, we call it consult, those are the people who put us where we're at. So how we gonna tell them, we don't want to hear anything you have to say? They're the people that put us there. What, I, that makes no sense to me. So you're gonna tell the people that the superintendent didn't put y'all there? The people put you there. So it's like, how do you do?
So Cory, I want you to talk about this and I'm gonna go to Denise. Because Denise said something good about an act and we want to talk about that Amistad Act. But Cory, I want to ask you this question. This is the concern that I have with what you just said, right? The people put them there. I made a post today that pretty much said, I'm not running against, you know, A one, A two and A three. I'm not running against a machine or something, right? Some type of shadow government or whatever it is. It's like something that's unseen because my thing is, like, and this is no disrespect to either those young people that were mentioned, but I don't know why they're there to begin with. And, and it's just because of the lack of interest that they had exuded in terms of educational issues before that. You know, this is, again, it's not personal. And their lack of knowledge as it relates to budget or anything that they would be dealing with as far as this. So when those people get into those positions and people who we know, our city is varied, if nothing else, with talent. Like, and other people who, I mean, at times, it's, it's been like almost seventeen people running. And the people who are better candidates, it seems like they never get selected. So, the thing is, I'm trying to figure out, how does this happen? Who's to blame? Because again, I'm not running against those people who are running against, I'm running against whoever put them there. Casey, Denise said a few minutes ago, one of the young ladies is running now, ran on a charter um, platform.
Correct.
Soon as she got on the board, he took her child out of charter. Well, I think, did she take him out or was the child ejected?
Most people don't just take their children out. I don't know the story behind it, but he's not in that charter. He is attending our great traditional public schools, so it doesn't matter to me. The money didn't come when he came, but now the money is there because he's been there.
Right. So, so he's not there anymore, but she's still champion, championing for the charters. So again, it turns into this is a business. And the last group of people that ran, they ran on that platform, you know, children over politics. But still, we fight this battle of politics dominant, dominating over our children, dominating over almost everything. And like I said, I don't, I don't know, you know, is this going on in Patt- Patterson too? Maybe if we can like do a little, we could understand a little.
It took me four years to get back on the board. I ran every year. And I don't know what happened to the people last year. I was really surprised, I'm gonna tell you the truth. Because I, every year I ran, I was running against the machine.
Right.
And um, election night in November, I went home and, and just got in bed because I figured it'd be the same as every other year. They called me and said, bring your butt down to City Hall, get down here now. I didn't know what the people, I don't know what changed in their minds. But uh, somebody was telling me that the political machine is still a machine, right? It's still an engine. And if you throw a small wrench into a big engine, you can still stall it. So, might only be one, might only be two. If we can get a couple of small wrenches into that machine, we can stall it long enough to get people on there who really care about our children. Because I've been watching Newark and I've been watching the way these people are voting. And I know a lot of the way they're voting is not based on knowledge and information. It's based on who has the biggest lights or the brightest sign. It doesn't come down to who really cares for children. It's unimaginable why Denise is not on that board right now, while you're not on it. And why, uh, there's another young lady on there that was, that just got off, she just got her doctorate.
They got Orleans.
Yeah, it, it amazes me that folks like that, uh, Johnny Lat, people who actually fight, they have blood and, and skin in the game. And you have people who just, they don't run at all. They have a machine that gets the information out to everybody, the mailers go out, they don't even have to run. They just have to prepare themselves to sit up there on the tape. But hopefully, people are beginning to open their eyes, I'm praying. And they're beginning to see that you, it, it can't be about who's most popular. It has to be about the person who really has an interest for children. And I'm really hoping that this year, that people get it right. Uh, maybe, maybe this was the perfect storm, we'll see. But hopefully, people get it right.
Yeah.
No, because it is an issue here too, in Patterson.
So, so wow. So Denise, I want to ask you, because you mentioned an act a few moments ago and I want to segue that into the Amistad Act. Have you heard any of the um, um, candidates at all, like really driving and pushing the Amistad Act? Because since two thousand and two, we know that this has been in place. And we still have not gotten it to a point where it's every day that is liquid in terms of our kids building on their history and who they are. And I just haven't heard the outcry um, from anyone, but maybe I could have missed it because I definitely have been, not been down there with my work schedule as much as I used to.
They have been talking about the Amistad Act. There's a teacher from Central who sits on the Amistad Commission, who there is supposed to be putting the committee together, working together. But no, no, they haven't actually implemented the curriculum the way it should be implemented in all the traditional public schools. It's not that hard. But when you have a young lady head a program and instruction who's never been, first of all, never went to traditional public school, who's never been in a um, teaching position except for the organization that she, the nonprofit that she runs. Um, and really doesn't, uh, Al Dorian Murray.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't know, when you say she, like, yeah, I didn't know you were talking about.
Oh, because you know what, I know all the board members that I'm talking about, so thank you for asking that question. Um, that, that, that doesn't have the education background that Leah had. Lee, uh, doesn't have the, um, I'm not saying she doesn't have the attitude to learn. But this wasn't a time for people to learn on their job. This was a time to put people in positions that can go take this board forward because we were going to local control. And the very people who fought and were on the very front line of going to local control, they did not support them in running. And I must say, the slate they call the uh, council slate or the mayor's slate, a lot of those individuals, not that, and that's one of those individuals have never, were never attending board meetings or business meeting. Just all of a sudden, they said, okay, we need people up there that's gonna follow what we say do. When we say jump, they say hop, when we say sit, they say howl. And they came and put them there, just like, I don't have, I don't believe that. Um, I'm glad to see you running. First of all, I think this is a historical moment. Because the ballots will go out in mail to every voter listed on the Newark school. I mean, on the Newark registered voter roster. This time, I believe that you guys have a true opportunity to get in and maybe shemanticue, who is an educator, who I've seen on the front lines with me, who I've seen down in Trenton and took you for your birthday to eat because we met up in Trenton because we was down there fighting for the kids in Newark. Where I've seen you go too bad at the mic intellectually, intelligently, who understand policy and procedure, who know how to work with people you and others wise not work with as a leader and build leadership like myself. I don't have to like you or bring you to hang. If we got something that you, if I know you're doing something that I agree with, I work with you more. I don't have to work with you, but I work with you more. You have the wherewithal to build leadership, to bring knowledge. You have the wherewithal to run that program and instruction committee so that we see academic achievement. You have the ability to hold the superintendent accountable like he should be accountable as an executive employee of the board. And the board's responsibility is to make sure that everybody, community, students, parents, um, staff, everybody is respected and rights are protected. That's the governing body of the board. They're not supposed to be Gucci crunched with the superintendent. They're supposed to be professional with the superintendent. Do you want to be Gucci crunched? Do it on the day that you're not board member. But at those board meetings, he is a person that is invited to sit up on that basis. He's not supposed to be controlling the meeting. He's not supposed to be telling the board, shit, stop, I want somebody to speak. Actually, go ahead and speak, you go. That's not what he's supposed to do. He's supposed to only report out at those board meetings and questions what the board has put forth to him. But the board is so young, immature and governing that he sometimes take over the board meetings.
Denise, Denise, when you say, and it's so difficult to hear you, I really wish I could hear you more. It is like really, really hard to hear you. But I did hear you say something about um, immature behavior on the board. Um, can you just share with us what you constitute as immature behavior? And just a quick response, because I want to go back to Cory on something you said a few minutes ago.
What I constitute as immature behavior is, the way the board, when they ask them a question and sometimes he comes back at them curt. Or prime example, Reggie asked them at the February board meeting, uh, and they, when they, when he had Ms. Dal up there sitting about what was the budget for the two schools that they were gonna bring up. The way he responded to Reggie, I was totally shocked. He said, it's no budget for them, dah 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 dah. But I was saying to myself, that can't be possible because you're getting ready to open them in September. There has to be some type of budget for opening those two new schools, even if you're doing it one grade level at a time. So the question he asked was a typical question. But Reggie as a, and I'm gonna say something, Reggie is the most experienced board member up there. If he, they didn't run him because he did challenge and ask those questions. And if he would have ran again, he should be chair of that.
Right. Cory, um, what are you doing in your district in terms of the Amistad Act?
Right now, we have a committee that was established by one of our board members. Ironically, that board member is like under attack. But um, in terms of actually doing something, there hasn't been a lot of movement in Patterson. It's, it's really a shame when we bring up the topic, it's, it's mostly brushed off. And I don't understand, you have, you have majority African-American board members. You think that that would have its place in making sure that our children, our, especially our children of color, understand that. I mean, we know that our history goes back to when we were kings, but we also want to make sure they understand the ups and the downs as well. You know, there's been some arguments about homicide, it's just about slavery. It's a little deeper than that and we need to explore that. One of our board members, Emmanuel Capers, um, has been champion, championing the effort to try to get that through for ye- for at least four years now. And um, it's been a constant pushback, so I mean, hopefully.
Who, who is going the pushback? This is, and, and again, we, go back to that shadow government, like who, you don't understand? Like, the, the, the battle that we're up against with public school education is coming from somewhere other than just those people that sit on the board. And that's why I kind of look past them because they're not the problem. The problem is, like, who has them with? Like, who has the power to put representative? Like, who has the power to put representatives in charge of the black community as it relates to education? That, and, and even at a time when we were about to lose our schools that had no knowledge or anything about running the school district or, or even choosing a superintendent, like, and, and, and this is not a new problem, right, but it's a problem that has existed that I think that far too many people have adapted to and we need to start to question and challenge, you know, these exercises, so with that being said. Denise, you talked about, um, some, um, some.
Sure, let me address something you said, there's no, it is no shadow government, everyone knows um, what has been happening in urban areas. And in urban areas, what has happened is the reformers came in, the reformers with charters. And the foundations and the companies like Audible, Prudential and all of them and, and the big banks, like Wells Fargo, like Bank America, that's the shadow government you're talking about. Because they provide the money for the PACs. When we ran, if, when we ran, they provided, they had to spend a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars against community people to beat us out of winning. That money didn't come from those candidates, it came from the charter PAC. If you look on the flyer that comes into your home, on the bottom, it, it's pushing them from all rights and say that this PAC mailed this flyer out. It don't even say that the people they allege endorsed them. Um, endorsed them, it says the PAC put that flyer together, so the onus is on the PAC, and who is the PAC? That's where, when you talk about shadow government, you have to talk about where is the money coming from and follow the source of the money. See, because actually, the mayor can't put a slate together according to Title eighteen A, Section two four two. That, that, that governs the mayor and any elective issue. They cannot use their positions to dish and franchise the community. Am I right or wrong, Cory?
Yeah, I don't know, that's why I was wondering, when the governor decided to do vote by mail, was he doing that or not?
Well, you know, I went on the governor's lives and I put live up here when he was talking about all of the elections, but the school board. I put on his live, well, what about the school board, can we cancel the school board election because of the coronavirus? Until April three year, when we open back up and then six seats instead of three seat seats will be up. And then the candidates would have an opportunity to engage the public in the election. Whereas, um, that's what should be done, it should still, you know, take place because then that would be fair, but this is an opportunity to that they should take the melon, right, the melon, so that the machine with, they may have to spend tons and tons and tons of money to really reach you. But you still have an opportunity to reach out to people so that we have an opportunity to win. But when you talk about money, it's, and you talk about shadow government, Shilla, that's the shadow government that you're talking about. You know.
I'm not sure, you know, the reason why, and I hear.
The reformers.
Yeah, the reason why I'm not sure because before the reformers, right? We've always had this problem, it's just not a new problem, and I hear what you're saying, I'm not taking away from what you're saying, but I'm still.
They did have the problem, Shilla, but they couldn't get three people in at one time. They really couldn't get three people in at one time, and still they start forming that slate.
Yeah, like, like I said, I, I'm just not, I'm, I'm not sure, just because, like I said before, now, even when Christine Todd Whitman was governor. You know, and, and it still was the same type of thing going on, you know, and, you know, just with the, the.
Christie is, Christie was charter, Christie was charter, he pushed the charter, he had charter money backing, yes he did.
True, I'm not talking about him, um, Denise, I said Christine Todd Whitman. When she was the governor.
Oh, Christie Todd Whitman.
Yeah, and so, like I said, like, no matter who, it's just always a problem, and speaking of money. What's going on with the money for community schools, are we still on the pathway to our community schools?
First, I mean, uh, full, full service.
Have community schools. We don't, in Newark, we no longer have the community schools. Um, at, at a meeting, maybe in twenty nineteen, Roger announced the working of the twenty twenty, um, cl- clarity in the twenty twenty clarity, I told people, read on page seven, he got the broader bolder approach in there. What the broader bolder approach model is, is the charter model. Now, I asked him and I have been questioning, are we following the pedagogy of the broader bolder approach? Are we following the structure of the broader bolder approach? Because policy state in Title eighteen A in the Constitution of New Jersey and the New Jersey statute and the administrative code. You cannot turn a public school into a charter school unless you have fifty-one percent of the teachers who teach at that school sign a petition in agreement and fifty-one of the parents who have children registered in that school who are in agreement to that. And that would never happen because the parents have a choice now. And the parents still choose traditional public school as a way to educate their children because they have been in charters and have had bad experiences in charters. But because charter has that reformer money, the things that go on in charters are not as publicized because they're not as transparent. And the fact that charters do not disaggregate their data. They aggregate their data and they only report out the best test scores. Public schools have actually been performing better than charter schools. Because they are not required to report directly out to the board under Q S A, like Newark traditional public schools are. Is why you see the difference. When you see that newspaper that rank the top high schools in Newark, call them and ask them what the requirement is. You know how they rank them, cause people, the, the heads of those schools or people who back those schools, call them and give them the statistic, they don't even go out and verify if what they're reporting to them is true.
Denise, well, let me, wow, that's insane, let me ask you another question, in terms of the reports. Are they still doing reports? Because the only thing, as, as soon as I keep me in is like about absentee, what happened with the reports?
Well, since, uh, remember I said to you, since they, they, they have taken over the board. They do not report out on test scores anymore, they do not report out on, um, 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 the math, the reading, the scores, we haven't gotten any of that.
So, actually, yeah, so that's what I'm trying to establish for the audience, Denise, so basically not only do we have entities that are, are, um, like, just squelching our voice. But they're not even given the information that they used to, to the masses, to the people so that they can even know status updates in terms of what's going on in terms of scores and academic, you know, progression.
They're giving the people illusion, I'll give you a prime example, Shilla, we had three hundred vacancies, right? So at one meeting, Floeisha, um, Johnson Hill said, oh, I wanna congratulate the, uh, the personnel department. She said, I wanna grat, congratulate the personnel department for bringing the, uh, um, teachers down to a hundred and seventy-five employees. So I'm looking and I'm looking at the, uh, the information and I go to all the meetings. So when I got up to speed, I said, first of all, tell the truth, they didn't bring down from a, three hundred vacancies to a hundred and seventy-five vacancies. What they did was collapse classrooms and overcrowed classrooms. Now teachers have overcrowded classrooms, teachers have to take double period, now we paying teachers more money because now they taking more periods than they supposed to and they traveling from one school to another school to meet the criteria. So you, they, they didn't hire people there, they collapsed classes and now we have increased class sizes because our board lacked the now, financial knowledge and, and, and questions to ask. Okay, even if you don't have a lot of money, there's certain things you can do to make things viable for the district. So, we look better on paper. Newark Public School right now look better on paper than we do in our actual schools and things.
This, this is horrendous, um, Cory.
Yeah.
Is that normal, it sounds abnormal to have three hundred vacancies? Like in, in mid-year like this, like, like what is, um, the comparison in Patterson to that situation?
We don't really see that, see, when I listen at Denise's, Cory, it almost sounds like they're keeping two sets of books. You know, that's a whole nother thing, because we have to dig in, when you're, when you're dealing with a lot of money and you're reporting out that you have vacancies, but inwardly you don't, and you're getting more money than you're really entitled to get. Sounds like there might be two sets of books going on here.
Wow.
Gotta look at it, when you're dealing with all of this money, what's the school budget for, for Newark right now? Ours is like over five.
Ours is a billion.
See there?
We have a billion something.
That, that's a lot of money to play with. So if you have two sets of books going and you have one set of books saying we have vacancies, we need more money to fill them.
But remember, I, but we have a billion dollar budget, but remember, two hundred and, or, I think it's two hundred and eighty-four million went out to charters. So it only give us like eight hundred to work with.
Okay.
So, we don't actually, and that's what irritates me when they say we have a billion dollar budget, we don't have a billion dollar budget, the actual working budget. Right, if you look at the numbers, absolutely, so, you know, they, I don't know, you know, we're not getting the same, and, and I, and I'm told reporters to go back and look. If you look at the meetings in twenty eleven, twenty ten and you look at the meetings now, they're giving us a whole lot less information than we are entitled to, they know they don't report out the vacancies like they used to in the schools and in the primary position. They don't report out the test scores that we had prior year, this year, what we improved on. We get, what they do, Cory, is they give an illusion of inclusion because
Yeah, see.
Yes, Cory, what they do is say, like, when we had to go for a waiver for, um, cause we didn't, for, I think it's, um, governance or part of the testing. They came up to you and I'm sitting in the meeting and she says, and we're gonna go for a waiver because we wanna be able to evaluate ourselves, so say for instance, Shilla, and you're a teacher. Say for instance, a kid got a fifty-five. And next year, and, and the passing grade is, you know, a hundred. Okay, but a kid gets fifty-five. And next year, the kid gets a fifty-six. Still failing, but they say the kid showed progress because the kid went from, but your kid is still failing. So we could not show that we could, our choo, our, our schools were passing at the required rate, so we're asking for a waiver instead of them being transparent saying he just came in, you know, blah, blah, they, they put, they continuously use the charter illusion of inclusion and, and use illusionary tactics to make the public think that we're doing actually great.
So Denise, can you just tell us real quick and then Cory, I'm gonna come back to you.
Okay.
Let's see, these kids are still failing, what is going on with the reading program, do, do we still have the reading program?
No, the reading programs across the high schools, the literacy programs have been totally dropped, they haven't brought anything back in. But this year, there was no literacy programs, absolutely not, no. And, and let me say this, I have a problem with leadership in the district and, and the board because leadership starts at the top. Um, and when you talk and don't know how to respect people, that means if your superintendent talking, don't know how to respect people, that means then he doesn't know how to do morale in the district. And I'm not saying this is true of the superintendent, we have.
I understand.
Example. I am talking about our board though. If our board does not know how to motivate our superintendent so that he can motivate his leaders under him and then they can motivate their employees under them and then the supervisors under them know how to motivate their employee. Then the district is always gonna be at a disadvantage. Because part of being a leader is showing empathy, is showing courage to say, hey, we did do this wrong, but we're gonna do it right, the public can respect that. And, under all circumstances. When you don't get training yourself, when you don't know that you don't know and you have people who are dedicated to this district, they come up and say, hey, you're not following this policy, you're not looking at this policy, you're not looking at this. And then you take it as if they're becoming a problem instead of you doing the research yourself, it's a problem. This board has a problem with doing the work because they claim we're disrespectful because they wanna go home to their families too, but you only do board business two days a week, that's the law.
That's it.
You do board business two days a week, so if it take you to one to two o'clock in the morning, so be it, but you have to do board business. You cannot even call yourself a board member at, when you're not doing the board business two days a week. If you go to the school, you must sign in the school, you must go to the principal and let him know you're there. If you see anything, all you can do is write it down and give it to the principal, you cannot test no, touch nobody, you can't correct nobody. You are not a board member but two days a month.
I was gonna say, it's not even a week, it's two days a month.
Two days a month.
This is, so even with that, in a district, and Cory, I'm going right to you to let you just speak on what you think about this. The end of history, that the test scores are usually just dismal and it's like, how do you abolish a reading program and just that's just like, I, I just can't even absorb that, but Cory, what are you thinking as you hear what Denise just shared with us?
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, how do you do that, that's mind-boggling. We know reading is fundamental, so why would you take that away of all things or abolish that? I mean, who makes the, who made the final decision, was that like the board literally voted to, to take out?
No, that was, that was, though she, the board had to vote on it because it was the director that took it out of the school to replace the I think it's the one eighty-five, I can't think of it, but I have the notes, yeah, the one eighty-five, is that what it's called, but, but the literacy.
Read one eighty?
Yeah, read one eighty.
Yeah, okay, they were also supposed to get, um, another program. I didn't follow it, it was a program that wa, was more, um, catered to a differentiated instruction, Lexile. What happened with Lexile?
That's not there either, they're trying, and what they call themselves doing is restructuring, but even if you restructure, you don't take what's you already have until you find what you're gonna replace it with, you replace it and implement. Um, and a lot of things, see, the public don't know because the public don't attend the meeting. And then what our board has not been doing is, Cory, they do the, they don't discuss the stuff that is in the packet like they're supposed to before the open public meeting, when the regular meeting comes and then you take a vote on it and you have the you, like, before we used to have a session where you could only come up and speak on the agenda items. And then we had a session where it's the open public session. So they took, they took the part where we can speak on the agenda, we can't even speak on the agenda, Cory. All we have is open, and yeah, and they do the open public meeting before they do talk about the agenda items, Cory, and vote on it.
So you only have a chance to hear what they're doing before you get a chance to, to address it. Wow, well, Newark, they gone crazy.
This is educational oppression at its best, at its best. And this is why when they talk about parental engagement, it's ridiculous. It's like she said, it's smoke and mirrors, you don't want parental engagement. Because if you want parental engagement, there's no way, the only two policies that you're ever discussing, right? Is limiting their talk time, abandoning them from actually even coming to the board meetings. So the whole parental engagement is a joke, the whole trying to get the test scores up is a joke. Because how do you not, how do you abolish a reading program? How do you give your rights over to an employee? Who does that? And, and these things are the things that happen in urban communities. These are the things that I was saying earlier, that keep our kids on a continuum of either feeding the school to prison pipeline or feeding poverty. Right now, we have entire families that are homeless. And these kids have to come to school, and now that we're de, dealing with this crisis, it's compi- And these kids have to come to school. And now that we're de- dealing with this crisis, it's compiled.
Of course.
Like, like, this is crushing some families. It's definitely crushing businesses in our community, right? And it is, and it's crushing, it's traumatizing on top of the regular dramas that we already we're trying to deal with as a collective community. And it's like, when does it end? And again, of these people, and even though they know that they have not done anything, they love to make it look like they did something. And now you want to run again. And I'm telling you, if I couldn't do no better than that, I, I would just not run. I would, and, and that's the problem that I have. I have a problem with them personally. But I have the problem with when people allow themselves to get used. And in our community, there's so many people who don't have, and I'm not gonna say anyone's things cuz that's not what this is about this evening. But when you have, um, so many people that are economically strapped, you could just come, you got your pick of people that you can choose. Hey, I'll pick you to put on the board. Um, you can't read and write really well. Hmm, I'll pick you to put on the board because then you never ask any questions, right? You're not even concerned about any line items cuz you don't even know what the line items are. You don't even know what's going on. You just know what you're told to do. And then it's like you're a puppet and you don't even realize the catastrophic impact that's having on our community for generations and generations to come. And then you sit there and you smirk at the parents. They should be happy and lucky that they have a parent like Denise. And you don't want to sit there, you know why? Cuz this ain't what you signed up for. But what did you sign up for? What did you do? And I'm not even gonna start asking the questions. Who got other jobs, you know, at places like
Of course.
the county? And we're not even gonna go there cuz I think we already know. So we don't even have to touch that. But what I'm really concerned about is our kids teaching and learning. Now, the last cla- question for the evening. Um, Denise, I just wanna, um, hear you talk about this cuz Westside is the school that's within my district, um, in the West District. And I'm just curious, like, I, I hear a lot of hoopla about how great Westside is doing, but then I hear some contradictory things sometimes in terms of the actual scores. Like what, what's, have you heard anything about Westside? Like what's the status of Westside?
Well, first of all, I am a Westside alumni. I am active in my Alumni Association. Yeah, I'm a rough rider, rough all the way. I want to first say, I, um, respect Principal Afah Cook.
Okay.
But I feel that our principal voices are being stagnated, the staff voices are being stagnated because I don't feel that they can, eh, because I go into the school. Like I'm into the school. I've, I've spoken to people and stuff that, and I've observed. Like, they don't have the resources. At the board meeting in February, I went up to the mic and I told them about the reading programs that, with the literacy programs across the district that is not there, but two that you mentioned. I also mentioned that Westside have an overwhelming population that has IEPs and five oh fours and they don't have the resources. I mentioned the fact that they have a population, seventy-five percent of the population needs social emotional counseling that ain't even identified for, um, special education or reso- um, five oh fours for resources that is not even identified. They don't have the resources that they need. And I'm telling you now, I love the fact that Oprah gave money to the Lights On program. I love the fact that, uh, what's her name? Ellen DeGeneres gave money to the program. But what are we doing about putting and talking to the actual people and putting that actual resources into our school? We have a population there and I forget the name of the academy that is,
Criminal Justice, um, Academy? Is it the Criminal Justice?
It's not the Criminal Justice Academy. In Westside, there's academy. Eh, there is, um, a group of children who are in our school who are connected to the criminal justice system. They wear ankle bracelets or they still have to report to the probation officer.
Please tell me that they're getting their resources at least.
We don't have the resources for them. No, we don't in Westside. But you're not gonna hear them say it because they can't say it. Because what's, what the district keep doing is wanting to look good on paper. We look very good on paper. They sit up here and talk about, and everybody want to model Newark district. Well, honey, if they really went into our schools and really wanted to model Newark district, they would be questioning why our staff don't have the resources. And what I'm really concerned with Cory and Shilla as board members, stop always saying what the children need. The staff is burnt out.
Staff is what?
Because they don't have the resources for the children to give the children the quality things that they need in the school to make the school an environment that is productive, that is academically rigorous. And we don't look at the fact that our teachers and our students need a social emotional, uh, uh, full-time staff in each of the schools with a room where they can go and they can de-escalate. It'll change the whole culture and environment of our schools. So when we talk, we need to stop just talking about the students. We need to talk about support for the, the teachers. We need to talk about support for the staff, for the community. Cuz when my son went to Central, let me tell you. Uh, 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 maintenance worker or custodial worker came to me and said to me, my son had graduated and I had stopped in cuz I was donating his uniform. And she said, Ms. Cole, can I speak to you? I said, yes. I can't think of her name. She said, Patrick lost his father and he's in college playing ball. She said, when I was in college playing ball, she said, uh, she might have been a custodial worker or a teacher. I'm not sure. Teacher aide or something like that. But she said, when I was in college playing ball and I lost my parent, I took a spiral.
I, I have a quick question.
What I want to say to you is.
Denise, no, no, we're not done. You, I'm gonna come right back to you. Let me, um, somebody posed a question for you. They said that, um, one of their clients said that the Lights On program does not do anything, like, I guess in terms of mentoring. Um, they just sit there and play games. Do you have any information about that?
Well, the Lights On program is an after-school program and I'mma ta- tell her that I understand what she's saying and I've, um, questioned that fact that it's a lot more. I know they said they watch it, but it's supposed to be haircut. They're supposed to be doing some other things, like they have a, a entrepreneurial academy there. They have a, um, lab where you can go in and the kids can make music and stuff. So it's supposed to be a lot of other things going on rather than, just rather than babysitting. At least that's what they're reporting. I've never been to the Lights On program. And they also provide a very well-rounded meal for them. And I know that, um, the, the Principal Afah challenged me to help him bring the services there, to advocate for the services, and I'm doing that. I think he is the right person to lead that school.
Wait, 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 cuz we, we don't, she's saying a, a few things on here. Um, she's also saying that Westside has a lot of issues. They are not hype like the media is saying. I could speak on it. He's using the Lights On program to make money for himself. He told administrators, he charges a hundred K to replicate that program. Okay, so this is what I'm gonna say. We don't know any of that whether it's true or not. So we're just gonna leave that on the table. We'll do some research and come back to that later. So we're not gonna comment on that right now because right now, this is not, um,
Cuz I don't know anything about what they're saying.
One second.
Let me, let me finish. Um, we want to start bringing this to a close because usually I try to keep it for like an hour, hour and a half, a wet hour and a half mark. Um, so I just want to thank everybody who made comments. If there anybody who has any pressing questions, please put them there. Um, and if we can't get to all of them now, all three of us will come back to the thread and definitely respond to the questions. Um, we all are on Facebook so you can, you know, talk to us via the thread. You can inbox us and we could keep the communication going. Um, but I want to start the closeout on this and, um, I want to give Denise the last word. So I'm gonna go, she started so Cory. I just want you to share with us a brief summary. How do you think what you've heard about Newark? Like compares in terms of what's going on in Patterson?
Well, I mean, to, to Denise's point, I know that there has been a lot of saying that, you know, everyone wants to model after Newark. But I, I think that, when this is what I've been asking for for quite a while, is that Newark School Board and Patterson School Board, we need to have our own, um, uh, workshop, you know, our own retreat where the public provided. But just so we could compare and contrast what we, how we function as boards. Because I think sometimes if, you know, if we bounce ideas off each other, we could find out where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are at.
Right.
And, and one of the worst things you could do is to feel like you have all the answers or you know exactly how it's all done.
Absolutely.
So I, so I think if the Newark School Board and the Patterson School Board sits down and says, let's work out a schedule so we can sit out in the public. Pick or choose a medium, a location and have a, a, a public dialogue where we can bounce ideas. As I'm telling you right now, I would shoot down that idea about not letting the public speak and not letting them come. That's nonsense. I would hurry up and shoot that down because that's not. And there's probably some things that they hear that we do that they think might not be conducive to supporting the teachers, supporting the parents and the students. So then we need, Denise to be, you seen the shirt on me, right? Says we over me. We have to get that concept that in order to get things done, we gotta do it together.
And I think there's, there has been, and I'm sorry to, what you were saying. There's been, like, I love that concept because in order to get to the we, it's a process.
Right.
It's a process to talk through and you see it as we're dealing with the crisis. The mayors from East Orange, Irvington, I think Orange, North, they're working together to combat that with the governor. So what you said is right. It takes everybody meeting and coming together. But I think the meetings need to be, um, i- i- in some way, solution orientated, right? That we're not just, you know, meeting, um, and, and, and then fall into the, the realm of analysis through paralysis, uh, what I said, paralysis through analysis. And that, we're talking about the problem for years and years and years. There needs to be some solution. So I love what you said about the workshop and the retreat. And I think that those types of events will help grow the maturity, you know, on our board as well as with our employees. Because this is some really incredibly damaging, and I'm telling you, it's damaging blacks and Hispanics.
True, true.
And, and it's damaging us beyond because our kids come out of school, what are they going to?
Right.
A job at Sine, a job, you can't.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can't afford the apartments here. So what happens when you're checking the question box, when you become a citizen in, in your voting age? And you want to know if they're gonna jack your taxes up? Like, so it's perpetual. We have to put some things in place to help us get to a place where we can, um, see some progress. Because like I said, this has been going on way too long and we have some amazing and incredible people who are activists, advocates, um, community engaged, parent engaged, um, and, and, and this just shouldn't be. So with that being said, Denise, I want to just leave the last word for you, um, just to sum it up and like close us out.
I want to say to the parent that wrote about Westside, please contact the Alumni Association and work with us because we do need, know that we're, what, Westside has issues and we're working to correct that. Um, I am supporting Principal Afah, the work he does. I am supporting the superintendent and the work that he is doing. But I'm saying that we all need to come together and we need to vote on the board. Um, Shilla Montague, um, ASICS, who is an educator, who, if you just see how you, she moderated this program here, you can tell she's a team player. She's a leader. She has empathy. She has courage. She takes risks. And that's what leaders do. They take risks. And she's able to say, hey, if I'm wrong, okay, I apologize. She's able to not take things personally because she's matured. Um, I also want to say, uh, Phil Wilson is running. He's a four, I think. And Ronnie, no, Ronnie Kellum is a four and Phil Wilson is a five. And I also want to say to the community, we need parent engagement, real parent engagement. We need you to contact your schools. And even if you can't come to a PTA meeting or a board meeting, um, just contact the principal and let him know what you can do.
Well, listen, this is what I'm gonna say, Denise, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but there's some very alarming comments being put here. Um, and all I can say again is, um, I, I see not one, but two draw counselors on here saying that like even when they call Westside, they're not getting answers. And I'm gonna just say to you guys that Denise does not play when it comes to Westside High. So you guys, please stay in touch after this show. And if there's something going on that is not right, trust me, it's gonna be taken care of. But at this time, I'm gonna bring it to the close cuz
And I don't play favorites because he's the principal. If the parent contact me and parents know. I've been working with parents. I've been getting resources there. I've been bringing stuff to the board meetings. Believe me. I am a, an alumni. I'm part of the Alumni Association. Gavin Teller, the Athletic Director can get in touch with me. Bessie Walker can get in touch with me. I've always put my, um, email address. You can get in touch with Shilla Montague. And personally, I don't support people who I don't believe can do the job. I would not do that ever because if Shilla gets on the board, not if, when you guys vote Shilla on the board, I will be holding her accountable too. We will be agreeing to disagree and not be disagreeable.
That's right.
So I just want to say to everybody, no, our schools aren't perfect. Is there things good going on in our district? Yes. But a lot of things are on paper. We look better on paper than we're actually doing. We need morale. We need real resources in our school. And the only way we're gonna get that is if we come together as a community.
Awesome. Well said. Well said. Denise, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Cory, again, thank you for taking out your time during this weekend to join us. I appreciate both of you. And together, we're gonna keep pushing regardless because we've been doing this for years and elections come and go. We're still always doing.
Cory, now he gonna see me in Trenton cuz I know I'm gonna see him.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, and listen, thank you, thank you, listening audience for, um, being with us on this Sunday evening, um, sharing your thoughts and feelings with us. And like I said, this particular broadcast is over, but the conversation is never over. Um, and with that being said, everybody have enjoyed the rest of your weekend. What's left of it. Peace.
Give me a call, Shilla.
I certainly will.